Okay. Everybody please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start, I guess we're gonna start with a voting meeting.
Yeah, we'll have an agenda edit when we get to the committee of the whole.
Okay. Ms. Hamel, could we have a roll call of board members, please?
Yes, Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin? Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Ms. Kordowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Basil?
Here.
Okay, under announcements, for the public's benefit, the rules for instructions for approaching the board and making comment are on the inside blue jacket cover. We're gonna do the special voting meeting first and then we'll move on to our regular committee of the whole meeting. Are there any agenda edits to the special voting meeting by board members? Okay, seeing none anything from the administration?
Not on this agenda.
Okay. All right. Having said all that, any public comments on the special voting meeting? Okay, seeing none, let's get started. Under personnel, we have a motion to approve the following retirements and resignations.
Seven A, one A. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Potts, second. I'd also just, is there any other comments from board members on this issue before we vote on it?
I want to thank Dr. Otto for his time here over the last five years. He really helped this school district and this board, I think, move the needle in a positive direction and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Likewise.
And we wish you the best on your new endeavors.
Thank you.
You and I talked a lot about this behind the scenes, but publicly I wanted to make that acknowledgement as well.
Thank you.
Having said that, any other comments, board members?
Yes, I'd like to comment, I just would like to thank Dr. Otto for his service and I agree with the comments that Mr. Basil made. Thank you, Dr. Otto.
You're welcome, thank you Connor.
Okay. Having said that, can we get a roll call vote now, please?
I want to make sure that we're just roll calling on seven A, one, with regrets?
Seven A, one, A.
One, okay, with regrets. I have a motion from Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Potts. Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Kordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Before we move on with the rest of the agenda, I just, first of all, this is my nature, I'm still gonna be here for a little while, there's a lot of work to do, school's gonna open soon, so we'll be working hard right up to the time I leave, so I've really got my mind on that. I really don't have a lot to say at this time, I'll wait till I get toward the actual, the true end, but I do want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to have served in this capacity. As a public educator my whole life, it was my goal at one time to become a superintendent. I was very fortunate to be able to have that happen so close to home in an area where I grew up. As I said, when I got hired here, this was the first community that I ever lived in as a married individual, I used to live over in Douglasville, so it was kind of a full circle for me. But I just am very, very grateful for having been able to serve the district. I think there are obviously some difficult times ahead and I do wish the board well in your search for my successor and I would certainly, you know, be willing to weigh in and help the board with that process in any way that I can in the time that I'll be here. But I've had a, as strange as it might sound, I've had a great time for the last five years plus trying to solve many difficult problems that are not just facing Daniel Boone, but that are facing all public schools and public service jobs and positions in general. So I think that sooner or later we'll get through this storm and we'll come out the other end better for it. I just hope I've had some positive impact in that during the time I've been here. So again, to Mr. Shaheen, Mr. Basil, you guys have been here with me since the beginning, to the other board members that are sitting here, I also have enjoyed working with you, to the board members that are no longer here, I'll probably reach out to them at some point and thank them. This has been, it's been a good ride, so I've enjoyed it and I'm looking forward actually to getting through the next four months and get some exciting projects underway before I leave. So thank all of you, I really do appreciate your confidence in me over the last five years.
Thank you, we appreciate it. As well. Okay, so move on?
Yes, you can move on.
Okay, moving on to seven...
Seven A, two.
D.
Okay. Seven A, sorry, seven A, two through D. Any other, any comments from board members? Seeing none, okay, Ms. Hamel?
I have a motion by Mr. Shaheen, second by Ms. Kordowski. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Ms. Kordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I, before we move on with the rest of the agenda, I just, first of all, this is my nature, I'm still gonna be here for a little while, there's a lot of work to do, school's gonna open soon, so we'll be working hard right up to the time I leave, so I've really got my mind on that. I really don't have a lot to say at this time, I'll wait till I get toward the actual, the true end, but I do want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to have served in this capacity. As a public educator my whole life, it was my goal at one time to become a superintendent. I was very fortunate to be able to have that happen so close to home in an area where I grew up. As I said, when I got hired here, this was the first community that I ever lived in as a married individual, I used to live over in Douglasville, so it was kind of a full circle for me. But I just am very, very grateful for having been able to serve the district. I think there are obviously some difficult times ahead and I do wish the board well in your search for my successor and I would certainly, you know, be willing to weigh in and help the board with that process in any way that I can in the time that I'll be here. But I've had a, as strange as it might sound, I've had a great time for the last five years plus trying to solve many difficult problems that are not just facing Daniel Boone, but that are facing all public schools and public service jobs and positions in general. So I think that sooner or later we'll get through this storm and we'll come out the other end better for it. I just hope I've had some positive impact in that during the time I've been here. So again, to Mr. Shaheen, Mr. Basil, you guys have been here with me since the beginning, to the other board members that are sitting here, I also have enjoyed working with you, to the board members that are no longer here, I'll probably reach out to them at some point and thank them. This has been, it's been a good ride, so I've enjoyed it and I'm looking forward actually to getting through the next four months and get some exciting projects underway before I leave. So thank all of you, I really do appreciate your confidence in me over the last five years.
Thank you, we appreciate it. As well. Okay, so move on?
Yes, you can move on.
Okay, moving on to seven...
Seven A, two.
Two.
I'll second that.
Okay. Seven A, sorry, seven A, two through D. Any other, any comments from board members? Seeing none, okay, Ms. Hamel?
I have a motion by Mr. Shaheen, second by Ms. Kordowski. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Kordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, great, thank you. Item eight, buildings grounds, a motion to approve the building name change from Amity Intermediate Center to Amity Elementary Center.
May I comment on this prior to your vote? I just want to let the board and the public know, for those of you looking at it, this was a formality that the state needed for us to actually take a board vote on it. When we did our preparations for the changeover, we didn't realize that the board actually had to vote for the change in name, but again, for everyone's benefit, Amity Intermediate Center is now Amity Elementary Center, not to be confused with what used to be called Amity Elementary Center some other time. So I guess this vote is rather important to make sure it's registered properly with the state, so that's really all, it's a formality.
I'll make the motion for item eight, A.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion from the board?
Well, what is the, who we've never mentioned, supposed to look into, what is the dollar impact of the budget, or signage?
Actually, you mean for the signage?
Letting that on anything else?
We've already changed, Mr. Smith, I forget, I think he might have gotten that for three. We changed the marquee in the front, we're working on trying to use the existing letters that we have, remember inside there was a big blue letters? I think we have the existing letters, that it's just our time and labor.
Okay. Do we need to use the existing letterhead up or do we...
We'll probably get new letterhead, I would have, there'd be a minimal cost on that. I mean, we'll use it for scrap paper, but we won't use it for...
Okay. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
I have a motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Shaheen, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Kordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Any old business? All right. Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn that meeting and we'll move on to the committee of the whole. Under announcements, I will make one announcement, that we will have an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel. Again, the same rules apply for public comments on the committee of the whole as they do for the voting meeting. At the beginning of the meeting here, we will have an opportunity for you to comment on the agenda and at the end of the meeting, we will have, after each section, we'll have opportunities for the public to comment on those sessions and at the end, we'll have an opportunity at that time as well. Having said that, any other comments from board members on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Otto?
I have an edit for the board. We need to pull item eight, B. That was inadvertent oversight, we actually can't make budget transfers for the first 90 days of the new fiscal year, so that has to come off.
First ninety?
First 90 days, not until October.
Got it, all right. Okay, so having said that, any public comment on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent report.
Okay, thank you. The majority of our time under summer activities has, we have really been working very hard getting ready to open the AEC building. Mr. Smith and his crew have worked painstakingly to make sure everything there goes smoothly, so I just want to give kudos to him and his crew. He looks very tired every time I see him, they're working very hard to get that done. But we are confident everything will be ready for the opening of school in two weeks, for those of you listening out there, it's just two weeks away, August 26th. In addition, as you can see from the special voting meeting, it's also been a very busy summer with a lot of personnel moving and transfers and things that we have to do for that. So moving on to item B, in preparation, it's really kind of the same theme continued. Today, when you drove up here, people are out again, today's the first day of practice for our fall athletic teams and the marching band has also started. This week, the high school and middle school will be holding building tours, all of this you can see on our website. And by the time school starts in two weeks, on the 26th, each elementary school will have a first grade and meet the teacher night, and that will be have taken place by then. Other than that, actually, things are currently strangely quiet and we're gonna just knock on wood when we say that, and we are anticipating a smooth opening to the 13, 14 school year. So as I said, it's been pretty quiet, just very, very busy behind the scenes getting everything ready to open up school again. And item C, per the board's request, since the Blazer Foundation has been established, I know the Blazer Foundation has been busy with some activities behind the scenes and I've invited Mrs. Conlon to come up and share some thoughts with the board about what's been going on with the foundation. Welcome, Mrs. Conlon.
Thank you. We have had a lot of exciting things going on at the foundation, the board that have been working very hard to move things forward. The really great news is the Blazer Foundation has been approved by the state of Pennsylvania as an educational improvement organization, which in short, the abbreviation is an EIO, D-I-O, and that allows us to participate in the educational improvement tax credit program. So we were able to get that approval in mid-July. With that approval, we have two programs that the state approved that we could receive money for, and that would be a Blazer TV studio at a high school and also a stock market game that Tuckler University puts on. It's an online game that a group of kids or classroom would have a hypothet of $100,000 and they would research stock and kids all over the country play this game. But what is going to allow us to do, because it is an online game, is going to allow us to be able to use some of that money to buy laptops and iPads and the technology that's needed to play that online game. So it's a great way to, you know, tie in the needs of the school, maybe free up some budget money for something else that is needed, so we're really excited about that. The deadline for any new companies to participate in this was July 1st, so I had spent several weeks calling local companies, hoping that we would get that approval before July 1st and get some local companies on board, but that part didn't happen. The good part is that there are hundreds and hundreds of companies in Pennsylvania that participate in this tax credit program and we are still able to take advantage if they have, if they have not committed that money yet, they are able to give to as many different EIOs as they want. Vanguard, for example, they get $2 million, over $2 million in tax credits, they can give back to any amount of EIOs that they would choose. Unfortunately, in Vanguard's situation, they don't give to schools and universities, but JP Mascara, they still have an open application process and I have turned in an application for the max, I'll keep my fingers crossed. I can also make available the Excel spreadsheet that was used a couple of years ago that showed all the different companies that participated and I'm hoping to make that public on our website. So anybody that wants their result, maybe they have a contact name of someone there that I could call and track down the right person. I probably spoke to about between 40 and 50 different companies during this time period trying to find the right person and we do have some leads still with that, so I'm very hopeful about that. Next year, all these new companies around us, I will have to talk to them with the help of everybody here, if they're passing on any contact names, any business names that might qualify for this and I'm hoping that next year we'll be able to really bring a lot of money through that program. Also, different revenue opportunities that we have going, we have two funds clubs in our community and one month ago has reached out and made the Blazer Foundation the benefactor of their fall clothing sale, so it's great to have their support. And then last week, the second month of the month, one of the Easts had called me and they had had a meeting and they wanted to support the Blazer Foundation as their main fundraiser for the year. So they'll be doing a lot of small fundraisers, but my understanding is that we will be the benefactor of that, so we have some good things there on the horizon shortly. I've also been working on a teacher pledge card and a parent deduction for the teachers and also a parent partner pledge card and we're planning to hold this teacher pledge card out to the teachers in the fall and the money that they might contribute through the payroll deduction or through a donation would go into a fund where teacher grants could be then awarded to teachers for innovative things they would like to do in the classroom. So the money that they, you know, feel free to donate will be benefiting their programs. I'm excited to speak to the staff on October 14th on that new service day. Another upcoming fundraiser, this year is gonna look a little bit different because of the deadline of the EITC and not being approved by that July 1st deadline, so this year looks a little different in that we might be doing a little more fundraising than we will in the future years. And our big upcoming fundraiser will happen in a couple of weeks and it is going to be something called the 25 Days of Christmas and it is going to be a raffle and the tickets are gonna be $5 or $5.20 and every day in December, December 1st through December 25th, we are going to draw a name and there's gonna be prizes like iPads, flyers tickets, Apple TV, different gift cards, iPod Shovel, things like that that people might not wanna go out and buy themselves but are willing to make a $5 donation to take that chance. So we're really hoping we can promote this in schools, just as an example, if 250 people would purchase the five tickets, that's $10,000. If 500 people in the community would purchase the five tickets, that's $20,000. And 1,000 people would purchase five tickets, that's $40,000 that would be raised. And knowing that we have over 37,000 students in many of the districts, you know, I'm hopeful that the parents might see this as a way to maybe contribution and maybe possibly get something in return, so we're really excited about that. Another part of the stores that we are actively working on is forming a grant writing team and we have several volunteers that have stepped forward and want to be on this team. We have several grant opportunities presented to us right now that we can take advantage of. Some of the grants are actually through parents, employers of the school district and I think that's gonna be important to get the word out that a lot of the companies around here that the community members are working on offer grants to educational foundations and to nonprofits. And in addition to that, they also, a lot of companies have corporate matches, so if someone is able to, willing to make a donation to us, a lot of times the corporation will match that and it's a really quick way that we could, you know, double our money, but extra effort to get money out of their pockets. We're also working hard on our PR opportunities, still letting people know about the foundation, what we do, what our mission is. We have a community that is coming up, which sponsors every year, it's on Saturday, September 7th, and they will have a booth there and representation there. We're hoping to get the kids excited about it and get the word out to them as well. We're hoping to get some good natured teachers to agree to a high five contest and that will be a way to try to get people to come to our booth and learn more about the foundation. We're planning on having a presence at the football meetings, including the shooting game. We're working on designing our website to make it, to make a priority to sponsorships for companies that are willing to donate to us, that we could give them advertising on our website as a way to thank them for their donation. Southern Brooks News recently has been willing to publish information that we're seeking volunteers, so we're hoping to continue working with the local newspapers and the Red Eagle and the Plus Town Mercury to get the word out about the foundation. And if there's any questions?
I just want to make a comment. Last year, we were kind of spinning our wheels a little bit trying to get this effort up and running. This is the kind of thing, I hope all of you in the audience are listening, this is the kind of thing that the community is gonna need to support in the coming years as things get tougher. So please, go tell two friends and have them tell two friends and have them tell two friends. These people are working very hard behind the scenes to try to raise money in any possible way that they can to help the kids of this community. And I applaud your efforts, I think it's fantastic what you're doing and even though I'll be leaving, I wish you guys lots of luck in the future.
And we're definitely looking to encourage your support, all of your support and you're absolutely right, this is where we're gonna take everybody, telling people about the EITC program, being willing to support us. One of the guidelines for a successful foundation, which obviously wouldn't be in the first year or so, but to give you an idea, a successful foundation brings in between $20 and $40 per student, so that's a nice goal to have, you know, to take our students and see what that figure looks like and have people rapidly learn how to do it.
I have a question regarding the money, the stock market games, the online games. Now, we currently, from my understanding, have a stock market curriculum, one of the classes already does that, will this be in conjunction with that or is this something separate for more kids to get involved in, how's that gonna work?
That's something we're gonna work with Mrs. Torsha and the staff on. The stock market game is for gifted third grade and then regular fourth through 12th grade, so it really leaves us a wide open door as far as accepting that money through the EITC and through that state program, you know, toward the technology. I'm not positive yet which facets will be taking advantage of that.
Do you guys have a list on your website as of yet of all the EIOs and the companies locally in the area that you've already reached out to in terms of soliciting EITC?
I don't have it on the website, but I do have a copy of it. Even with me right now, I have a copy.
I'm just wondering if there's a way that, you know, the district can leverage its network to help the foundation get the word out on EITC, because that's gonna be probably the key driver for fundraising for the foundation. So whatever we can do to assist the foundation, I mean, I think we clearly want to be able to do that and work hand in glove with what the foundation is trying to accomplish.
That would be great and that's exactly what I'm thinking. I believe that that's, that's one of the companies that was listed in the past times they participated in the EITC program. So, you know, there's probably a lot of businesses that are familiar to people and all I really need to know is just like one single name and I can get to the right person. And that's what I'm going to be concentrating on this year, you know, it's a lot to juggle, but the priority is every month that I am going to be meeting with these companies because this really is where the money is going to be, but it's not always about people making sacrifices, but it is going to take people making connections and being aware of the programs that is keeping on and running.
I'm just wondering if we, I'm just wondering if we can't get you a list of the companies the school district currently does business with as well as has done business with in the past? I mean, we've obviously spent a lot of money on building here in this district, so there's contractors and architects and engineers and so on and so forth, we made a lot of money developing the school district and I think it'd be, you know, within our purview to go back and ask them to help contribute to the school district in another way.
Would we have to get a list?
I think, yeah, we should have a list of those.
You can get that, can't you?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Fox Rothschild, you know, I know they have a fund set aside to make donations, both political and to charities and things of that nature, but certainly, I'm sure they would be happy to step up to the plate and make a donation to the foundation if someone would ask, you know.
That would be great. I mean, that's...
I would limit it just to, you talked about businesses openly that you work for. I mean, I work with General Electric and they know, they use similar, you just have to reach, not further up the road than you need, but they definitely do similar donations that are at a different scale.
Yeah, that would be great. Most of the large companies do do that. I already have some grant applications from a few parents that work with pharmaceutical companies. I've seen that with some of the grant applications or the donation ones, they weren't necessarily what it's going for, you know, how much that was gonna cost, you know, a lot of questions like that, but they're not unusual questions. So that is, it's a little bit of work, but certainly well worth it and yes, I could pursue that. I mean, it would be helpful to have ideas where people work or people email me, saying try this company, just because there are some of the big companies.
They always come around periodically, like getting emails all the time, saying, okay, it's not the United Way, not that they can do it through the United Way, but in those
Mrs. Torscha, you want to, because she's, Mrs. Torscha's part of this as well, with the, with the effort.
Does that have to happen, see one the same day as United Way comes out, and you got rotations required, and service ideas want, that means foundation to get overshadowed by the United Way? So I thought that you could reverse that on the October 14th?
Would we want to reverse that? Have United Way come out later and have our foundation come out first? I mean, I, I don't know, I think we'd rather want to support our own foundation before we support the United Way.
I just want to check practice.
Yeah.
We can check. I don't know what deadlines United Way might have in terms of getting their fund drive start, but that's a good question. We can, we can research that.
And I would be willing to go to individual buildings if...
I didn't even think of that. We can research that.
Meeting and meet with, you know, prior, prior to starting this shortly, I don't know what the faculty meetings are, but I don't mind it all, going to building to building and meeting with the teachers.
We could use the money more United Way.
And we'd also like to ask that we can teach our students how our foundation...
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking to myself that, I mean, United Way's got its own brand, right? Everybody knows what the United Way is and what it does. You know, Blazer Foundation needs as much help as it can get.
Absolutely. That's a good idea. We'll check into it.
Particularly the in-service coming up, because that's kind of the introduction.
No, that's, I'm, I'll, I will find out, because I usually have a hand in the United Way campaign here as superintendent, so we can check that out.
Yeah. And how's the rest of the board feel about that?
Definitely. I'm going to take care of it locally.
Okay.
Is there a problem on definitely making arrangements for, definitely to, to the faculty and stuff, so either way, we'll make sure it happens.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Conlan? Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming. Okay, moving on to curriculum instruction.
Any comments from the, you want to take questions now, Prue?
No.
I guess nobody has any. Okay, under curriculum and instruction, there is no report. I just wanted to confirm with the committee chairs here tonight under each of the subheadings. Mr. Shaheen, do you have, you're okay with the Wednesdays again?
We're, we're...
First Wednesday?
First Wednesday.
And your first meeting date will be September, October?
Right now, unless we run into an issue with, with others.
Okay, so tentatively, the...
A lot of times, and myself includes, so...
So tentatively, September 1st, one, okay. I don't know what date that is.
That would be a four spots, your...
September 4?
Your mail, Mr. Bob, isn't he? Mr. Kurtz?
Yeah, that should work for me. I'll get back to you if it doesn't.
Okay. That's all I have under curriculum and instruction.
Okay. Any board comments on, on the superintendent's report of curriculum instruction? Okay, seeing none, any public comments on the superintendent's report or curriculum instruction? All right, moving on to buildings and grounds.
As many of you know, we experimented this past summer. The experiment just ended Friday with a four-day flex schedule. The, starting back in early June, if you remember, if you've visited any of our buildings, we were shut down each building on Fridays, and it was originally intended as an energy conservation measure. We don't yet have the cost savings tabulated, because the bills aren't in, that takes a little time to gather that information. Once we get those billings, we'll be able to provide an, an exact amount, set a, you know, a benchmark year, and then see where we can go from there. From a personnel standpoint, logistically, there, it seemed to work. I, I think some people had to make some adjustments in, in their schedules, but we seemed to iron that out without any problem. So unless I'm, I missed something, we didn't really have any major issues in running the district for those nine weeks on a, on a four-day, on a four-day flex schedule.
Great, glad to hear that.
So we'll get to the, the facts and figures from that once we have them. In terms of, I'm going to skip B for the moment, I'll conclude the buildings and grounds report with that. Since school left out in June, obviously, you know APC is closed. One of my projects before I actually depart from the district will be to actively find some way to make use of the APC building, and I would like to say we're about 50% of the way or more there with a group called the River Rock Academy. We've had a number of meetings with them over the summer. We have made contact with other districts invited into the meeting. So far, I don't want to mention any names of those districts, but we do have one other district that has made a tentative commitment to actually place students there. This isn't a Daniel Boone program, we're just leasing the space, so I want to make it clear to the public, Daniel Boone's not running this. But what I'm trying to do as, as superintendent is make use of the space and, you know, to coin a word, to monetize the building a little bit and bring some money into the district that can certainly help our budget issues. I'm, I'm very optimistic. The, the gentleman that runs the River Rock Academy is very excited about coming to Daniel Boone to make use and lease some space in APC. River Rock is already, for your information, they're already across the county over in the Wilson School District doing the same thing. So there's even a little internal competition already here in Burke County. And again, for those of you that haven't really been following, this River Rock Academy is a, is a private school for alternative education programs for students that are experiencing adjustment problems in, in the regular school environment. Currently, River Rock works with an older age student, meaning junior high and older. They are actually looking though to launch a new program and doing it, there's a need across the county for services. We're finding that students a lot younger are beginning to experience a lot of these disciplinary problems that need some intensive, some intensive help, which is what River Rock does. So they are actually also looking to lease some space to do an elementary alternative ed program. So we're, I will be, that's one of my top priorities in the last four months that I have here, to make sure this gets in place, so that I, I know the goal of the staff from River Rock is to be here by January, so that it's up and running. So I will be bringing the board updates as we go along. The, the major issue will be just to work out the lease agreement. APC is, is, is ready to go. It doesn't really need a lot, obviously, it doesn't need a lot of work, it's in very good condition. They're excited about using the building, and I'm going to push very hard to make sure that this lease arrangement works out. So that's where that stands.
No, we're not, we're not busting.
They, they are, they, they're just using our space and they, whatever lease arrangement we'll either, the way they, they, to answer your question, no, we're not.
It's, it's fun to make sure, and a lot of times, you get alternative education, you get charter schools, wherever we have to bust the school.
No, this is, exactly. No, it's totally, we could probably, I don't know what contracting arrangement they'll want to make with us, but it would be a pay-for-service if we did. So I don't, we didn't really get that far along in the conversation. But I, I, I think this is a golden opportunity to, you know, make use of this building while we hopefully, maybe enrollment will go back up in a number of years, and the building will be waiting, you know, to accept Daniel Boone students again one day. But until then, I, I think this will be a good, a good way to make some money for the district. And the way you would make money, for the benefit of the board and the public on a, on a program like this, is every year, and I can't quote you the budget number, but I can quote a very close number, we spend about $1 million in out placements for students mainly who are of special needs. And those students have needs. I mean, we have to pay that money, it's part of their IEP. But the way you save that is if we could house some of those kids here by using River Rock, we could either have a cost avoidance with those by River Rock working out a lease arrangement to give us quote slots, or we could just charge them X dollars a month. We haven't gotten that far in the conversation yet, but that's, that's, it's going to be one of those. It's going to be A or B, or maybe a combination. And they've, River Rock's very flexible, they will do it whatever way the, the board and the district desires. Either way, we will, we will be able to see, just for an example, most special ed placements, and I won't say special ed, alternative ed, if a student needs to go off for the year because of some, some problem, it could be anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 bill for that placement. If we say five of the...
Can we just replace our Manitow?
It's, it's similar to a Manitow. It, it's that kind of program. So what would happen is, is if they're using our building, we quote, really get, if, say they gave us five free slots, and I don't want to negotiate here, because that's kind of the way it would work, but if they would give us that, then we could potentially find, that's a cost avoidance of $100,000 in our budget. So that's, that's big money. So that's what we're looking forward to and looking for a way to, to make use of this building.
They've done leases both ways, both by offering slots available to the school districts and/or just paying, you know, square foot price.
We, we pay, we pay a certain amount of money for, for seats or something in Manitow, and I just wondered if this is going to take that budget and...
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. The one thing I would say, and I was, I was pretty insistent on this, I had some members of my administrative team, Mr. Smith and I took a ride out to York County to visit one of their sites back in the spring. I know, Mr. McCowsky, did you, do you want to step up to the mic, please? I know, I mean, we were thoroughly impressed with their program, not just the fact that it's a money-saving issue, you certainly want to save money, but you want to have good things for kids. I know Mr. Miller is in the audience, he is, is aware of, of the River Rock Academy's reputation. Do you want to speak to a little bit of what you saw on your visit?
I'm very excited to the fact that they would come here and create an elementary program in Burke County. There is not, we are very limited in choices to two at the moment, for places two for our students in a major six environment that, that need those intensive services. The quality of the service that we are having available at the moment is very different than the quality of River Rock. It is quite an impressive program, impressive to the fact that one of the directors of the school is a former special education bureau, special education administrator, and I had a chance to speak with him when I went to visit there. And, you know, he also is greatly supportive of things to say about the program. It is absolutely amazing. If you have the chance, you can go visit one of those, you can see the, the difference to the quality of what we have currently in Burke County as to their program. I've reached out to several special education supervisors who live in the school districts, and I already have ensured that three other school districts that are, who are willing to come and listen to a presentation, and also are looking for a student to matriculate.
Thank you. We're really excited about making this work, so we'll, we'll keep you updated, and, and I'll be pushing ahead to, as long as the board's in agreement, we'll, we'll keep moving this forward and, and get it done.
Should we put a deadline on if they're interested in having a lease signed, so that we have time, timeframe for getting something started by January?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, this is going to move fast.
I'm just saying that we, in your discussions with them, set a deadline of, look, we want to have a lease signed by, pick a date, October 15th.
Yeah. The only thing holding us up right now is we have at least one other school that has committed to feeding students into the program. For his business model to work, he needs a little bit more than that, so we're actively, I'll be calling some other school districts tomorrow, I don't want to name them at this point, but they're local, and see if they would be interested in, you know, everybody has kids in placements. If they're willing to pull them out of those placements and commit to bringing them here, they could save a lot of money in the other districts as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay, any public, public comments, please?
Hi, Hannah Tyler, what we feel we're... I think there's another problem with this, what we're discussing right now, I don't think it's being portrayed correctly, in fact, we split the children there, and it's probably has to be emotional and psychiatric disabilities, so it's not just an alternative school, it has, it's housing children who have severe psychiatric and emotional issues. And as a parent, I really, although my heart goes out to those parents, I don't want my elementary children right next door to those children. It really concerns as far as safety, you know, especially with like the school shootings and things like that, and you just can't be too safe. And I, I don't think that that really helps our school district, I don't think it's in the best interest of our children and our district. And I also feel that it certainly does not help our property advice, so, you know, I'm sure there are other programs that we can come up with that will keep our children a little bit safer. I don't, I mean, that just doesn't make sense.
If, if, I, I, I will respond this way, I, I think all of your concerns are frankly very legitimate. However, we have so far done, I think, the best research that we can. I don't, characterizing the, the student population there with severe psychiatric and emotional problems may be a stretch. I know they do have problems. It is an alternative school, I won't, I won't debate that with you. Well, I, I understand that, but I, I, we've visited those facilities, and, I mean, there's, there are always going to be issues in a place like that, I won't deny that. But from what I've seen so far and the feedback that we've done, we've done our research, they, they take care of those issues and they, they try to deal with them. I can't ever totally guarantee 100% that nothing's ever going to happen, I would never do that. But I can assure you that, let me just finish, and then you can, you know, say what you need to. I, I just think before we would bring them in, and I, I think we've already done most of that research, that we wouldn't bring them in if we thought it was going to be a disaster. They run a very, very tight ship and a very good program. So I don't, I, I understand completely what you're saying. It's going to really be up to the board at the end of the day to weigh all that out with the research that we give them.
Okay. Well, I'm going to be guessing, would you feel comfortable putting your kid or next to psychiatric hospital with...
It's not a psychiatric hospital. It's not a psychiatric hospital.
Okay.
It's a school, it's an alternative school.
I understand. I'm actually there, someone who might be coming to this program, okay? Her son has a whole space, okay? And it has like, I mean, it's, it's crazy, it's, there's a lot going on there, and God forbid, like, again, she's one of my best friends, my heart goes out to her. I, I don't feel comfortable having my kids near her, because I don't know what's going to happen. And it just doesn't make sense, like, why would you ever put your kids, like, it just doesn't make sense.
We're not housing our students in the same building with...
It's not, it's way too small. It's way too small. It's a center only thing next to, we have a D C, and my kid runs at A S A, it's like, I, I just, like, I just don't understand why you guys are, like, are asking us to trust you guys at one time, but this is like really hard.
Well, I can assure you that, you know, this board and the administration has done a lot of research on this, and will continue to research this. And we've had people out to their sites and their facilities, and we'll continue to examine it. We've asked them for, I sat in a meeting with the owner of this facility and asked them if there had been any issues arising from their students in their schools, outside of their schools, and the answer was no. Now, could, could anything happen? Sure, but I think we also need to recognize, these, some of these students are our own students, they live in our community, they live next door to people now, and it's not like, these people are strangers.
I know.
Okay. And, and I'm not trying to be insensitive to your concern, I think you have a legitimate concern and it's something we need to address.
Do they have a rigid enrollment process? Like, do they have like a scale, and do they test them and figure out like where they are, and whether they would be a danger or wouldn't be a danger, and how would they control that?
I, I'd have to do more research on that. That's a good question. I don't, I don't know, sitting here. They do have a screening process for bringing kids in to decide whether or not they're acceptable for that program.
Right.
I just don't know what the process is, step by step.
Ms. Martino?
Rich Martino, she's been a vital member of Australia, and it's a really different , I'm glad that you're talking about maximizing revenue from the primary centers, this means we didn't put the rest of the administrative offices moving in.
We'll have to cross that bridge when it come to it. I mean, clearly, the lease will be expiring at the Matthew Brook Building within the next, I think it's the next 12 months, correct?
By this time next year, you will have to have made it, well, sometime in the spring, a decision's going to have to be made.
And so that's going to really be made based on the availability of space in other buildings, whether it's at the APC, or it's at the high school, or some other place, we'll look into where the appropriate place will be for next year and the year, and the years beyond that. I think one of the things we need to also weigh is, we'll have that enrollment in 12 months.
But the intent is to try and maximize revenue?
Clearly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I did leave out one item on the facilities committee meeting, I didn't mean to oversight you there, Mr. Potts. We still good with first Mondays?
I don't know what we're going to do for September for the holiday.
So you want to...
Other than that, going forward.
So October, we're looking at?
That way you can be the 7th of October.
Another holiday.
So the 7th is open, so are we looking at, tentatively for October?
So the seventh is open, so are we looking at, tentatively for October 7?
For that.
Okay. For the benefit of the public, first facilities meeting looks like Monday, October 7. Thank you. That's it under buildings and grounds.
Okay. Moving on to finance.
First of all, I'd like to welcome to the stage for the first time as our interim business manager, Mr. Boyer. Welcome. As you all know, Mrs. Penza left back in, in June, so Mr. Boyer's been holding up the fort, so to speak, for a little while. I'll walk through these, we obviously pulled A B. Mr. Boyer, do you wanna talk a little bit about the representative as, as for the health trust?
Yes, that's our health consortium. Each school district in Berks County that participates has administrative representative and a staff representative, and they make decisions based upon what healthcare is doing and what we're gonna be paying for medical, dental, anything that we participate in that consortium.
This is just, you're replacing Mrs. Penza, right?
That's correct. They need board approval to have a representative, so.
And then item E is a, is a bid process, and before I introduce our, we've contracted with someone on a limited basis to help us in the business office, but before I do that, I just wanted to let the public know as well, the board is actively seeking to replace Mrs. Penza. We have interviews scheduled for this Wednesday and Thursday evening with a small board committee. We have what we consider to be nine pretty solid candidates to be interviewed to potentially replace Mrs. Penza. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Denny Yonkin. Denny has been working with us for a few weeks on a very limited basis, and he's here helping out Mark in his new role until we can place our new business manager. So Denny, if you wanna, Denny has quite an extensive resume, I'd like him to at least give a little oversight, and you can share with us what, what you're doing to help us in the, in the recent weeks.
Thank you. Yes, it's been a pleasure to assist and serve the district since it's been assigned by PASBO to, to help out in the time I'm a real business manager. I just retired recently from a work in school district which is south of York. I worked for five years, probably I worked for 20 years as the director of funding and state college area at school district. And prior to that, since I got a 32-year career just ended in June, I worked in three other states, I was a director. So I've had some, from that, I thought I should continue to try to keep involved, and it really had been a pleasure to fill in and help serve the board and the district and community during some of the period. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to call the office.
Good man.
In the interim, we've been working very hard in the business office, basically closing 2012-15, working on holiday, also in finance reports with the community. And I have been working off times with regards to the POM, 500 project model that the board has obtained, and updating the data with real to the lab, and working for the district to determine what kind of assumption you want to make, to make the model come alive and project revenues and expenses over the next couple of years. So after all that, I'm going to answer the district, looking at those assumptions over the next couple of weeks. We hope to make that model available at the finance committee meeting next November.
Which, which brings us to that. Do we wanna set a date for that at this point?
We should do it the...
Last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday of the month.
So if you're good for that, that would be the 28th. So for the public's benefit, it looks like we're tentatively setting August 28th for our first finance committee meeting of the year. We may actually have some more news on our candidates as well. So that concludes the report under finance.
Okay, great. Any questions for the board on finance?
Ballpark, do you know when we end the year yet?
I haven't seen anything yet.
Still working on closing out the 12th of fiscal year, looking on some adjustment entries right now, aiming for the audit, so I'd probably say, the way things are going, end of August, maybe mid-September.
So are we still on that position?
So far, we're still looking at that based upon our projections, so we had some prior year expense we were paying, a lot of the special ed placements because of how they run, they usually give their invoices towards the end of the year, but we factored that into our projection, so we are looking pretty good now.
Good. All right, well, hopefully we'll have some variance reports at the August 20th meeting, and we can take a look at those. Any other questions?
Nothing new under the personnel since we...
Let me just give the public...
I'm sorry.
Any questions or comments to the public on finance? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel.
We can skip that, as we had our special voting meeting, we'll be coming back with any subsequent changes on the, the 26th.
Okay. Moving on then to programs.
I wanna take a little time with the enrollment, obviously with the closing buildings and, and some of the budget decisions we hadn't made, I think it's important to have a little analysis here. I'd like if you could have your July enrollment report in front of you. If you remember in our APC closure report, we actually projected about 1,572 elementary students to start this school year. So if you look at the report, you can see we were pretty close to that. As of July 31st, and actually extending, it's probably more up to date, pretty close to today, we're at 1,556, so, and we're anticipating that that'll probably go up a little bit with late enrollments. So we were pretty close to the number. We do, as I said, expect some slight changes upward in the next two weeks, so it could go either way. Frankly, it's a little, sometimes it can be volatile, but it's, it's usually relatively predictable that it'll probably go up. I also wanted the, the board to be aware that we're outside of our recommended class size ranges that we post on that report, that's also part of district policy, with three fourth grade sections at MEC that are at 27 students. Obviously, the larger class sizes get, the more, you know, difficult it becomes, but I'm, I'm confident that we can get the job done with, with those 27 students. I did have, Mrs. Hefter actually gave me the statistic that this group of kids was at the 90% proficient level on, on AYP, so that's, that's a good sign, in the fact that they're a very capable group, not that our other groups aren't, but I think that's an important statistic to keep in mind. And remember that we had four sections of fourth grade, but our kindergarten numbers started to swell, and we felt it was better use of our staff to keep our kindergarten numbers smaller, where the kids, obviously I think everyone would agree, need more attention. So we closed a fourth grade section at MEC, but we kept that person on board and opened, and had them take on the kindergarten role to keep the kindergarten sections at MEC within our class size ranges. The total district enrollment is very close to the, if you remember when we did our curtailment resolutions, we had to project enrollment was 3,650 as of, if you look at the report, we're at 3,645, so our, our projections were, were almost right on the, on the, on the number. So that obviously could change a little bit, but I'm, you know, when you get that close to the projection, that's, that's pretty good math. So I don't know if anybody has any, that would, I would take A and B together, that would be my summer enrollment update as well.
Where are we at the other elementary study? I'm not going for 27 kids in a full-grade class. It's identity that comes with the grade that you have, and we talked about that, and we were concerned with that before, and I don't wanna shift, obviously say take two kids out to be two or three children, not even classroomship in the building.
No, we don't wanna do that.
We don't want that, because then they have that disruption. But where are we, and again, I don't have my gun, my comfort.
I have them right here, what do you wanna know?
I mean, is there anywhere, somewhere else where we can use some consolidation where we're not sitting at 27 or so and still be able to...
Mrs. Torsia, I mean, she worked on me with this, I don't, I don't really see it, we could take a further look at it, I mean, there is, I mean...
No, we, we talked in curriculum that if this happened, if we were, if kindergarten increased, we had recommended that kindergarten teacher be replaced, and, and because of where the numbers were.
Can I just add something? As of 4 o'clock today, I have six enrollments that weren't projected on those numbers for MEC.
And, and where?
What grades?
I have three going to kindergarten, one third, one fifth, and one first.
So none, no more in fourth?
Well, at this time.
Right.
Would it be prudent to wait until we get till the end of August? Do we have better numbers to evaluate what we're doing?
We, yeah, we, what we traditionally give you, and we have to give it for the state, is our third-day enrollment figure, so you, you could wait till then. I mean, I, it's not the best practice, but we could certainly, if we had to open a section, we could do it very quickly.
What would the impact of a bunch of people opening up?
Starting teacher salary.
Starting teacher salary?
Plus benefits. So I, Mr. Boyer, I don't know if you know that off, 60,000 plus?
Yeah.
I, I think we should, we should look, we can have that rethought in the enrollment. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, in fourth grade, we just have to do that transition.
Absolutely, no, it's, it's, it's big, they're big classes.
Different, a lot of different things in APC, even though they're 90%, this is where we start getting ourselves into trouble going forward, where, you know, by putting 27 children in classrooms, we run into the, where you start to suffer the truth down the road because of that lack of training, and we'll be in a different style than that, different style of science and reading.
Well, all I would say is, it's, it's a, it's a definite toss-up. I, I think we can make it work, but if it's the board's persuasion to do that, you obviously are the ones that authorize the funds, so we can bring the numbers back in two weeks and, and see where they are in the first day of school, that's the first day of school, so we can give you on the 26th an update as to where we stand.
Yeah, I mean, we should, we should look at it.
I don't, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't look at it, I just think that, you know, we can pull the trigger at any time and do what needs to be done.
Do you know how late it is at 90%? Right.
Everybody in favor? We'll discuss it, take a look at the numbers as, on a rolling basis as we go forward, and then we'll make a decision.
I mean, with my board update each week, I'll, we have one more board update this, this week, and then the next week we meet again, so we'll have fresh numbers.
Okay.
Can you say fast, how fast? Like, how much time?
We could, we could, Mrs. Torsia, we could bring a long-term sub in...
Are you going to be able to bring a long-term sub?
So this has to be a contracted position.
It's essentially a contracted position, but you have teacher and service day starting next Tuesday, which should make sure to be a part of the training that's going along with Berks, 7900. There's a lot of ones to where you can't pull the trigger on the time to play.
Takes some time.
Kids are oriented in classrooms, they, they're with their peer group, you're gonna make the change, you can do it now, this year.
If we identify a personnel that possibly am not...
Did you hear that, Mrs. Torsia? As far as putting a staff person in place, what kind of turnaround time do you need?
We, we wouldn't need that much time, we just went through a lot of interviews for some positions, so I'm sure that there's other candidates out there that probably have, I think we have a staff on that right.
I think what you do is you, you put, get ready, somebody who's ready to fill a position when needed, and the board pulls the trigger in two weeks.
We can do that?
Two weeks, we need to start school Monday through 26th, Thursday through 28th. Next week, next week, so first week, we're gonna start up our...
Teachers start, our first day of inviting people back to work is the 22nd of August.
22nd.
Well, the 22nd though, right, okay.
The 20th, the day that...
Right. We have a split.
That comes through 21st, the day 12th.
Yeah, we, we knew that there was potential when we closed the building and we were running the ragged ends of the plate. With kindergarten, we got more than we thought we were gonna get, we shifted some things around, so, I mean, I don't, I'll arrest the board, I just, having sat on a run grid and talked to the, so I just, I feel seven, we have fourth grade classes, it's too much.
I just need consensus from the board as to which way you want me to go.
Ms. Hamlin, what do you think?
If we had to make it soon, I think my, my, my thought would be to add that person now, but they're starting, getting their training, everyone else, sort of coming up to speed with everyone else there. Because I don't think any, the numbers are really gonna change from beginning now.
They're not gonna go down.
So...
That I can guar, I can pretty much guarantee that.
We're identifying a problem.
Ms. Hamlin, what do you think?
Well, I was just gonna say, I really think that if we're going to do something, it has to be by the 16th, to give them an opportunity to have a weekend, to get things working, get up to speed, and then come to the meeting, so that they're all ready to go.
Ms. Trudowski.
I think, I, I think I'd agree, 27 is, is probably somebody to have in class time, so if that's, I mean, if that's what the numbers are, then we need to adjust that. And the only thing I would, and I'm sure you've looked at this, when you switch, I guess, the fourth grade, or you're to fourth grade, you're gonna have kindergarten.
Correct.
You can't consolidate, that you have like a half-day teacher working...
No, we've, we've, we've pulled all the strings that we can pull in that regard.
I don't think that's, I mean, it's unfortunate for the budget, I don't think it's unfortunate for the kids' budget. But it's, it's a work in progress, it can happen.
Okay, I think you guys got your marching order.
So, no, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Kurtz, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to look at the numbers and have time to think about it before committing to a decision. I think that we should reflect on this. At this point, I'm not prepared to recall a teacher, but again, I'd like to see the numbers that might influence my thinking.
They're on the... Right now, Mr. Kurtz, the numbers are, as what's been presented to us in the enrollment, there's been no additional, as of now, any updates to the fourth grade last?
Not in fourth grade, not in fourth grade.
Clearly, that's subject, we're being told that's something to change between now and the end of the year, or I'm...
Yeah, that's why I'm in favor of waiting.
Okay, so we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in favor?
So we are going to be posting and advertising and hiring, that's what I'm understanding.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
On behalf of the kids, thank you.
Okay, so that's under 10.
That's all I have on enrollment, if I can continue. Board members, we have, just for your review, as part of our security and safety planning, we spent the last year working with the IU. Mr. Smith and Mrs. Torsia really helped make this work. Some of our administrators had input. It's a rather lengthy all-hazards plan. It's a plan that's a template that's provided by PIMA, Pennsylvania Emergency Management Authority, or Association, I'm not sure exactly what that is, and all the school districts in Berks have developed this same plan, so that there's consistent response to a whole host of potential scenarios, none of them obviously positive, but if you look at page, you've had the chance to look on page 24 of the document, it deals with things such as bomb threats, earthquake, field trip emergency, hostage situations. I mean, these are all those things that you see in the news, but we have a responsibility to be prepared for those, so this, this booklet is a booklet that is in all of our buildings, our staff will be aware of what's in it, and it's our response to all of these situations. We had a similar document, we just kind of redid it and reformatted it with this, this new, this new plan. So I wanna thank the staff that, that really helped put this together, for the BCIU, for their assistance in, in helping us get this together. It's quite an extensive document, if you get a chance to look at it, it might be worth your time to see the efforts that we go to to try to keep our schools safe and secure.
I'm gonna backtrack for one second, do we need an official vote for adding another teacher, or is it just...
No, you get the board consensus on that.
When, you would, official, when we bring the person forward, then you would be saying that, but you've given us the authorization, I just need the authorization to spend the money.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to D.
D, this is just an out-of-state trip that the board has to approve, they, by board policy, they have to come through. Ben will be going to New Orleans, Louisiana, in April of this year, and all of that is funded by the students. Mr., Mr. Wolf, do you have any knowledge of this trip as a, you don't know what's going on here?
I don't have any, I don't have any particular instrument, I think longer.
I mean, I didn't hear much about this, other than I know they're gonna be going, so more to come on that if we need it. Item E, we're actually moving ahead and approving the 2014-15 and 15-16 school year calendar. There are some changes in there that I, Mrs. Torsia worked on these, do you wanna just give a brief summary, Mrs. Torsia, about what happened with these calendars that'll be, so the public's aware of what's coming in the, the next two years? about what happened with these calendars that'll be, so the public's aware of what's coming in the, the next two years?
We're starting school later today.
Oh, that's a big switch. I just want everybody to be aware of it, so you're getting advanced notice.
For the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, Labor Day is later, it is September first. And then the fall school year, and the fifteen, sixteen school year, I'm sorry, Labor Day is further, it's, um, September seventh. So we're starting, practicing school starting from September, um, the next two years, the beginning of the next two years.
Okay, and.
I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, one of these things are, where parents try to plan vacations, and try to plan holidays, and, and where, as our population tends to drift from home more and more, it makes it much easier to look out one year, two years, and be able to say, okay, I know when I, when we're gonna start, I know when we get time off, it makes it much easier to edit it.
Yeah, actually, when I saw this, I was looking at a bunch of other schools' calendars, and it was interesting to see how many start after Labor Day.
Starting to trend back again. It used to be that way.
So, okay, um, moving on to cyber.
On item F, um, again, consistent with, um, I'm not gonna take a lot of credit for this one, other than, you know, providing the, the, the go-ahead to get it done. Mrs. Torsia has been working very actively. Uh, again, uh, let me preface my comments, uh, about this whole cyber school thing. Again, students by state law have the right to use school district funds to educate, to be educated in a cyber school environment, which means they enroll in a cyber school, but those schools are funded with the money that comes to the school district. In an effort to try to stem the tide a little bit with that, we are currently, and I don't want to say losing, losing sounds negative, but we are spending over a million dollars on, um, cyber school payments. And if you've followed our, our budgetary dilemmas over the last couple of years, a million dollars would go a long, long way. So, um, what we're trying to do is put together a plan that will, we're gonna market ourselves, and we're in the process of trying to bring students that are in that environment back to our school, because one of the things that they, a student in the cyber environment can't get is a Daniel Boone diploma. And we do believe a Daniel Boone diploma is a worthwhile goal to have. So we're trying to entice, uh, these families that are involved in this. I don't have the exact number. I think it's about a hundred students. Is that correct, Mr. Boyer? Somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred students.
Under a hundred right now.
Just under a hundred. So, uh, give or take, it's very close to a million dollars of, of, of cash that is leaving the school district. We don't expect to get all of those students back, but we are expecting to make a serious dent. And again, if you're looking at trying to have cost avoidance, very similar to the alternative school situation, this is another, if we could just bring back twenty-five percent of that, that would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the district would save. And, um, we're looking at, at trying to make it a very cost-effective program, and that, that legwork is being done by Mrs. Torsia. So with that introduction, uh, I'd like to have Mrs. Torsia update the board and the public on where we stand with this initiative.
Well, we had our initial, they called a meeting, parent meeting, um, the works online learning on Wednesday, July thirty-first, in our district boardroom. It was, um, from nine to eleven, it's a two-hour period. Any time of the day really wasn't a better time of the day, according to the information that we had received on the works coming in our meeting unit. So we just went for the one, thinking, you know, that families may, you know, be engaged in coming out. We did have four families attend, three that were very interested, a lot of good questions, um, and, you know, they're, they are looking into moving from the programs that they are currently in and coming over to, to ours. We have signed one family up for absolute sure, that has moved to Hankville High School, and with his guidance counselor, and they've done a great job accommodating the student and bringing that student back to at least our online learning program. So thank you, Mr. Hankel, for your efforts. Uh, our principals have been calling up with families that have withdrawn, and seeing that there is a, quite a few students withdrawing and going to Twenty-First Century. And it seems that their credit, um, for high school graduation is much lower. It was a good bit, so that seems to be the, the choice, that, um, the BCIU people were not very aware of their programs. So they're, they're taking the steps to become more money, or with their program, with, with the Twenty-First Century cyber schools is offering. And it seems we can be a little bit competitive without lowering our high school graduation expectations, because if you're going to walk away with a Daniel Boone diploma, we really don't want them to lower our expectations, because we don't want students jumping ship. Um, we are currently in the final stages of finishing the student survey. We are trying to get something out to see why students are leaving. And I apologize for the delay in that, but of course, Mrs. Long was out on the mental leave for a little bit, and Mike was not able to get on top of that. But we are, we do have that completed, and we will be getting that out this week. Uh, we will also begin to phone calls to families that are currently enrolled in some other cyber school, and see what we can do about giving them more information, hoping to pull them in for a face-to-face meeting, answer some questions, see, see what we can do to get them, you know, into our, our program, and ultimately that influence. So we are moving, uh, forward. The understanding is, is once you get one or two families in, they start to come back. That, that's my experience from talking to other school districts, that, you know, getting that first family in is, is key, and then word of mouth, you know, really helps to spread, you know, news about our program.
Is it a rolling enrollment, so people can basically switch at any time?
Yes, just, just like any other public school.
And, um, have you guys looked at also identifying the students that left, those that maybe played sports here as well? I mean, there's, if we're offering the cyber here, they could also play sports here too, correct?
We're, we're looking at, they can, they can also play sports, they can participate in our band, they can, you know, access anything that any other kindergarten student can.
Right.
They would have to officially re-enroll with us.
Correct.
They would be back on our student body, so to speak.
So we're soliciting every student. We're, we're going after all of them, not just.
Sure.
We're going straight down the list and asking parents, you know, why, why aren't you here, can we bring you back? Some families I know are using cyber schools for homeschooling purposes, because you see multiple siblings from one family, you know, in a program. So we really want to try to market them, more so because it's not like they left us to go to a program, and perhaps the idea that they can participate in our band, because we do get a lot of phone calls from elementary homeschool parents who utilize cyber school to, to be able to access our programs. And the tech is another thing, you know, we would be able to talk about that. So we're, we're gonna start getting the, the phone this week as a follow-up after that meeting and see what we can do. And then continue. It, it's going to continue that we're just gonna be, you know, knocking on, on the doors, because that is what other school districts, government, specifically, said that they've been doing, and, and really it's helpful.
So we're, we're excited about the opportunity.
Yeah, I, one question. I know we touched on this back in June. The cyber program that we're offering obviously replicates our current curriculum, but does it also offer a variety of program outside of our current curriculum as well?
It does.
So there's another advantage there for those students that are, to come and take a second look?
Yeah, and it's something that I'm going to bring to one of our first curriculum meetings, is the proposal for us to be able to figure out a way to bring the Mandarin Chinese into our schools for all students, and talk about whether or not it could be an evening class. You know, hey, there, there was a parent that attended the meeting who was very, very interested in being able to access foreign language at a young age. And this, not that she would leave our, her in order school, but she would involve her children in this course. This is not something that's being offered at that level anymore, and she would also like to extend it to an elementary student. So the IU said that they do have things like that.
Yeah, I think it's a degree that we could offer that to our existing students as well.
We had talked about that, yeah, we talked about that in the curriculum, and, and she, Mrs. Torsia's gonna bring that back. Maybe not necessarily for, for actual, we have to look at both ends, whether the actual class credits were for graduation, but at least from a standpoint of, you know, the revenue generating, or both, we gotta look at it from that standpoint. I mean, uh, the district was looking into, if you're gonna use it for a graduation requirement, and you're a brick-and-mortar student, can you charge for that, and have it be used for graduation requirement?
Correct.
And even think you could, um, so it would be extra curric, it would be extra, um, so it would supplement their, their, their education, but probably could not be used as a graduation credit for a requirement.
So wouldn't it fill an elective or something like that?
No, again, you could charge for their, their.
Hold on, I'm just wondering, like, if they went and took a, a class at, like Rack or something like that, and we wouldn't give them credit for that class?
Well, again, they're, they're not, they're not going to Daniel Boone technical, so going to Rack and bringing that credit in.
Is Mr. Hankel here? I thought we had, I thought we discussed something where, you know, kids go to other schools, and then we approve their transcripts, and whether or not that meets our requirements. Isn't this sort of the same thing? They're going to another school, and, and maybe taking a class there, wouldn't that meet our requirements in terms of their trans, their, their credits transferring, or? I thought we had a discussion at one point in time, Mr. Cockle had come down here and talked about how there was an opportunity for somebody to go abroad and study in Germany or some other place, and then come back here, and whether those credits would be applicable to meet our graduation requirements. And then we evaluate those students on a case-by-case basis to see what classes they took, and whether or not those do indeed, uh, could be used towards credits here at our school. So you don't, for example, if you disappear for your junior year, you don't lose a whole year of high school when you come back.
This is, this is different, though.
I know, I know what you're saying.
The district was looking into it. They're, they would be paying Daniel Boone to take a course, a cyber course, and then use that course that they, that we charged them for as graduation requirement. You're looking into whether they could legally, we could do that. Understand, going to Germany for your junior year, or you're going to Rack, taking a course, looking at that. Those are all legitimate, because we weren't charging for that course. That was the same thing that he said, it was very similar going back to charging for kindergarten. You know, we couldn't charge for kindergarten if we offered kindergarten. So he's looking into it. I mean, that's all, hopefully we can get an answer.
But at the same time, I'm looking into what the cost would be for us to be able to offer, um, that type of course for an elective at the high school that would be not had a charge for the student, but would be something that the school district would take.
Yeah, okay.
Are we looking at students, and just like, that have dropped out even with, say, three, four years ago, and say they want to come back to get a Daniel Boone, like a GED, are they able to get on cyber school and then get their diploma?
They, they would still have to meet the graduation requirements or age requirements, so.
Right.
Depending on their age, and depending on, if they don't, you certainly, you have to look at that. That, that would be, I think, something completely different if we were looking to offer a GED program. But that would, you know, and it'd be something that we'd talk about that.
So we currently don't offer any type of GED?
Not that I know of.
No, we don't do, we don't, we don't do that.
The GED program.
But just, any student in the state of Pennsylvania has the right to come back and access their public education until they turn twenty-one years old, so.
Right, I remember that in policy.
So they can, if, if somebody has dropped out of sight for a couple of years, and they want to come back to school and, and try to resurrect their high school career, we can't say no. You have to let them in.
So they wouldn't be allowed then?
Well, then, then in a sense, sure, they would be able to do that.
We want to back in our building, we want, we want them to attend cyber school necessarily, but the only way, if they were choosing to choose another cyber school at the cost of this, we certainly solicit them and say, hey, we have something to offer you, sorry.
See, the, the one thing I want to make clear about the cyber school situation, the families, they don't need our permission. They just go call up the cyber school and off they go. It's, it's part of school choice in Pennsylvania, so, um.
No, you have to, you have to market, you have to compete.
Exactly. We're, we're in a position now where we have to actively market and, and compete for those, uh, for the attention of those students. I think it's a, it's a healthy competition, we're willing to take it on.
I just wasn't sure if they came back, could we charge them a fee? Since we're not getting the money anymore from the state, are we able to?
No, you would start to get, once they re-enroll.
And get the money.
They, yeah, they have, they have to, they have to let us know that they're back in school, but they don't need our permission for them to go off to that cyber school.
And I'd just hate to see, I've heard some kids that are dropped out because they had babies, or they had this, or they had that in their life, and.
Up to twenty-one, yeah, absolutely.
They could take care of their child and the, uh, Daniel Boone student. I, I was just wondering if that was possible for some of them?
It, it would absolutely, absolutely would.
Yeah, I think there's positives all around with this, and, uh, the sooner we can get this thing implemented and rolled, the better.
Well, I think this is, if I can just make a closing comment on this, the, this is, I think, is the new wave in education now. This, what we're starting here is very similar to the, what's going on with the Blazer Foundation. We're just taking baby steps right now. I, I can see out three, four, or five years to where, um, blended schools and things like that, where you're doing a lot more, colleges are doing it now, and it's gonna start filtering down into the public schools. And it is already in many places where, um, not just students who are out in cyber schools already, but students just in your general population, you can start to do some really creative things with technology. And I, I know, I've spoken with some of our, um, some of our, I'll just say it, more forward-looking staff members who are very interested in getting something like this off the ground. There, I, I know there's many teachers within the staff at Daniel Boone who have been talking to me for a couple of years about, hey, let's do something with this and that. So, um, as you move forward for your, your new candidate, you might want to ask them what their, their view on that whole thing is. But I think it's, uh, it could be an exciting time for the district and public education in general.
Any other comments from board members?
Yeah, I just want to say, if we can offer students Daniel Boone credit for taking college-level classes, I think we should pursue that.
We can certainly check that out.
Okay, any other comments from board members? Okay, any public comment on, um?
So.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Barry Ward. So I'm very happy that cyber school enrollment has reached a point that it's on your radar, and it's something that you feel like you need to compete with, because frankly, that's why our state legislators, and that is school choice in the first place. But while you're competing with cyber schools, you can do something. And I went and attended the meeting that supports you, and a few things that were said in that meeting are not true. One of the things that was said in the meeting is that students who attend cyber charter schools cannot participate in extracurricular activities, after-school activities within the school district. And Pennsylvania state law says that, and it's back in the hand of the, and I was sending email to all the board members tonight with a link to that legislation. So if state law says you can do it, you can disprove it publicly and say that.
I don't believe that's true.
Another, another issue that's raised at that meeting is the question as to whether students graduating from a cyber charter school will be accepted by the military. Federal law, as of twenty-eleven, states that they will be accepted by the military as an after-graduate graduate of any legally operated school in their state. So again, you can't say that, you know, federal law says that they will be accepted by the military. Another thing was NCAA acceptance of the credits at these schools, whether a student could participate in college athletics or not. That's also not an issue. I went and looked at dozens of different cyber charter schools that have the same number of classes that are accepted by the NCAA as this school. Another issue that was brought up, which was mentioned, is, uh, the perception that kids are going to cyber charter schools because there's less credits, so it'll be easier to graduate, or something like that. So I had heard that one before, but just looking on the website for the schools my kids are attending, as well as this school's website. This school requires twenty-four credits to graduate from high school, this school that my kids are in requires twenty-three. Does anybody really think that somebody went to that school to not get the credit?
Thank you for those comments. Um, I think it was my understanding all along that our students could, in fact, participate in sports here. And that's actually one of the selling points that we're looking forward to, and, and talking to the students that have matriculated away from Daniel Boone to cyber charter, was that, hey, look, you can come back here, still participate in cyber charter, and participate in our extracurricular activities as well.
I think, I think what you're saying, that if you're going to Twenty-First right now, you can't play sports at Daniel Boone, that's incorrect.
Oh, that's incorrect, that's correct.
And as well as the military aspect, I know at least one individual that went to cyber school, is going to the early childhood, so no, that's also not correct. It's a myth, and that, it's on several cyber school websites, it's the, our myth, so that is, that, that.
Yeah, so we obviously want to make sure we're communicating the correct message to the public. Thank you for your comments, sir.
David Paul, four four three zero, uh, just a question, uh, what company or what institution is supporting the base, it's for a Daniel Boone charter school? I mean, is, is this, uh, a, a free package or a?
Mrs. Torsia can answer that for you. That's what we're working with the BCIU.
It, it, um, two vendors, different vendors who are offering courses through other cyber schools that are set up throughout the state, so we're using similar vendors that these schools are, that we're talking about.
There's, there's, I, I, it's all, you know, other, you know.
Right, and, and K-12 is one of the vendors that the works online, I mean, does, that, that they do a lot of that. do a lot of that.
Sure as I can, it's a big one. Or, or.
Any other comments? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to policy.
I will touch base with Mr. Sermon, I'm always chair of that committee, so we'll, we'll get our first date set for that.
Okay. Um, any comments from the public on policy? All right, seeing none. Uh, nothing in transportation, old business?
I have one thing, actually, it's old, old and new. Uh, we had a discussion back at the end of July and it, it did not make, uh, did make it through for the end of the budget year. Uh, we met with our contractors in transportation and we had one issue brought up and we brought that report to the board as far as their transportation coordinator. Right now, president of the district supplies or provides $25,000 for that position. They're asking for a small increase, that, that's been instituted from '08 and they're looking for $5,000 per year increase, up to the surface of which would be $30,000 and with C P I adjustment, minimum of 2%. And we brought that forth to the board and I would just like to take action on that.
I thought we did take action on that.
I thought we, did we go back to the counter?
We did.
We went back, they went.
We should probably talk about this in executive session, but we did discuss this. Yeah.
I, I don't think we voted on that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm almost positive we did. So we'll talk about this after the meeting.
We're not voting that we should discuss that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Um, okay. Uh, old business, discussion of activity fee schedule for the 2013, 14 year. Um, how's that working out? Um, as, as far as, um, the, what the board voted in June, we've implemented, uh, the old activity fee. Mr. Boyer, I know, has worked very hard in getting the online site running, so I'll let him weigh in on that.
The current fee schedule we have, $150 for the first sport, $75 for the second sport. Uh, we actually have the fall sport set up on the on, um, online site. Uh, they are inactive right now pending, um, Mrs. Goth, G- Goss, our athletic facilitator, um, when she gives me the green light, I will enable those on the site and the public can go and pay online.
Is there any reason why we're waiting?
Uh, it's basically, um, Mrs. Goss's choice because most parents don't pay until they know their kid has, or the student has made the, um, final cut of the sport.
Those practices just started today.
Yes, so it's, it's been, I guess, just how the trend of when, um, parents actually make their payments is usually towards more just beginning of the actual school year.
I think so far what I, what I've learned, maybe Mr. Hankel, you can help, I think the cheerleading squad has already started to pay and they, they've been selected. I'm not sure if that's, that's what I heard. You know anything about that?
I talked to Michelle and it's set up the Thursday because technically the first three days were tryouts and even though some sports don't have cuts or some do, so we're waiting for all of those final rosters to be determined by the end of the day. We're going to put Thursday as an objective feature.
But again, we proceed, we proceeded, predicated on the, the June 28 vote, um, to keep the activity.
The question is, um, do we have to wait till they all, or do we have to say, okay, golf doesn't have any cuts, let's put golf active right now, drilling doesn't have any cuts, put drilling the active right now? Or does that help you buy sports?
No, it's just a click, it's the all individual, it's by work, you've just got click enable and it's, it's out there.
I would click it because quite frankly, um, you're going to have some people starting to pay by check and cash and, you know, all the other ways that, that, um, they've been traditionally paying and I think we're trying to minimize that collection burden, um, by implementing an online.
That was the whole time job, collecting money.
Exactly.
Checking lists and everything else, you've got it online, you run a report, these people paid, these people have.
And broadcast it. I don't know how you broadcast it, whether it's a connect ed or it's, you know, on the website, you notify the coaches, but let everybody know, go on, go to our website to, to make payment on your, your fall activities because that's going to make our lives a lot easier administratively, um, right, right through the entire, um, stakeholder chain.
I believe this is all, has that been spent or to generate the decisions being done?
That should be done automatically online.
With this online, that's a valid.
As long as somebody's with you.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from board members on activity fees and the schedule and, all right. Any new business?
I have one.
Uh, we're not quite there yet.
Um, I have one thing on the new business, I know it says none. I was reading through secretary notes and, uh, this book that I got and it said that we should have a secretary for the board other than Sandy, if I'm not available to be here, that they would step in from me and that needed to be like kind of a alternate secretary. So I was just curious whether we wanted to do that or not, if I'm not available, um, and Miss Gray wasn't here either for some odd reason.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
No.
I mean, you're just.
It's just someone needs to just know what to do other than myself, if I'm not available.
Yeah, I think that's. But what you're saying is it needs to be a board member.
Needs to be a board member.
Yeah, I think we can handle that.
Okay. Does anyone want to?
Well, let's toss it out. I think what we'll do is we'll send an email to the entire boards because two people aren't present and let them, everybody can weigh in. If you're not here, you're in, yeah. Get somebody else.
I just wanted to bring up, I did read it and I thought, well, I didn't, it wasn't presented before, so I thought I would.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll definitely get that done.
Who's going to send it?
I'll send it out. Okay. All right, um, any other new business? Mr. Kurtz?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Um, having said that, uh, public presentation on any issue?
Maureen Wilkie, 203, Bethany Tredor. Um, I was just, when you were talking about these, like, poor sports, um, like, my daughter's gonna, um, start middle school, well, I'm sorry, she'll be in second grade, but this year she's allowed to play sports. She's gonna, um, try out for the faculty, but we don't know 100% that she's going to make the team, so I don't want to pay $150, I think it said, until I know she makes the team. So some of the rosters are not finalized until the start of school. So if those sports aren't finalized for that, I think it's fair that the parents don't pay until they.
No one, no one's asking the parents to pay for anything until their kids are officially on the team.
Okay, so that, those sports that, um, the rosters are finalized later, they get paid later.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, and also, um, and I'm sorry, not up to date with all my fees. Um, can you tell me what the current band fee is?
They're, they're the same. So band and, and, um, athletics are treated the same. It's $150 for the first activity and it's $75 for the second activity. And that's capped.
They're all going to be as one, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Jason Meyer, 907, thanks for that. Uh, my question is, is, uh, I wonder why the parents publicly not notified about the custodian, the monochymic, sexual assault?
What part of that did you need to know? That custodian had been fired and out of the employee of the school district prior to the school district, learning that there actually was an issue with that?
Well, as I'm saying, I think the parents, especially that the school should have been aware of that. At least the incident took place, staff members no longer there, we knew nothing about.
The school district wasn't aware that the incident took place prior to that termination of the employee. So the employee was fired and then after the fact, uh, the school district learned that there might have been an issue there.
Let's just say, when was he fired?
Uh, last September and the dismissal was unrelated to what actually came out then in the news.
So he was not fired because of the assault?
Nobody, wasn't even on the, on the radar that there had been an assault?
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, I, I think it, his parents said that we should have notified that this incident took place instead of having to read about it in the crime law and the red eagle a year later.
Well, I can't speak to that. All I can say is that, you know, as a district, um, the, the employee had been fired because, uh, several different issues and that was done in September. And then, um, after that time, uh, the police had begun investigating this individual for what happened, um, and, um, they came to the building and they did some investigations and.
I want to make it very clear, the district had no knowledge, this is a very terrible event. We had no knowledge until the police conducted their investigation. We had absolutely no knowledge of, of what had happened. It was a, a private, uh, matter within that family. Unfortunately, um, it spilled over in, uh, into our atmosphere without our knowledge. We acted appropriately, cooperated with the authorities, provided them with all the information. There was really nothing for us to share with the public. It was a police matter. It was an investigation that did not involve, the school did not investigate that matter. We had no say or any input into that investigation of that incident.
Understandable, but.
Then what would we have told you?
That there was an investigation going on or that this had actually taken place. At that time you knew about it, the police notified you, you was under arrest. Parents could have notified that there was in fact a sexual predator inside the school.
At no time was there any, ever, any student in our building in danger as a result of that incident. That was a private, individual matter within that family.
So the, the assault did not take place in the.
I don't have all the details. The police didn't share it all with us. We weren't privy to that information. It was a private investigation. It was not a school district investigation.
Understandable, but, all right, and this is going off of what was in the police law is that the incident took place in the bathroom and monochymic.
We don't have, we don't have any confirmation of that at this point in time. And frankly, the individual in question is, it's, it's actually still a pending matter. The case has not been fully resolved, so beyond making any further comments, I'm not really comfortable making other comments until the police close the investigation.
That, that, I mean, correct, we were not informed of the arrest, correct?
We weren't informed at all.
We weren't informed.
The, the detectives did not take the time to give the school district a heads up as to what happened. We knew there was an investigation going on, but we're not privy to share that kind of information to, to jeopardize the investigation.
Understandable, but once the arrest was made.
We, the school district found out the arrest was made the same time the public did. The, the police did not call us up and say. They didn't give me a heads up and say, oh, by the way, this is going in the newspaper. And I'm, I, I don't work for the Berks County detectives. They did not include us as a district in the investigation. We had to cooperate with whatever they asked us to do and we did fully.
Okay, that being said, could the board, the school district, whoever, could have not informed the parents saying, seriously, this took place, the employee just to?
We did post something on the website. As soon as we knew the information, we posted something on our website. The very next day.
Okay, I'm okay with that, but I guarantee not every person on the website would have seen that.
I, I can understand that, but I, I, I think we did our due diligence in, in informing as much as we possibly could.
I, I disagree.
Um, I respect that, but I, I think we did. Any other public comment?
Shane Arnold, 8:30, I remember, um, I wanted to bring up a point about, uh, your gifted program. Um, there's a lot of things offered in the school, uh, after school programs and stuff like the, you mentioned the stock trading game where kids, other students would be able to participate, but they really don't know that it's going on. Um, we've been finding this out, um, my oldest daughter, she was just shopping, making the gift program. So she went all the way through her school missing these extra activities, but she could have participated in, but, but it's pretty much can't be students that are told, you know, here's this stock program going on after school or the odds are the other ones or there's, um, a lot of things that your student body could be participating, but they're not quite aware of. And I think that's something that this, you know, this school district should actually look into and make sure other students are aware that they can participate in it, uh, when they're being offered to, uh, the school students. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm not sure if you're aware of it or not, but there's a lot of programs that are excellent programs and there's a lot of smart kids in this, in the school district that are missing these opportunities.
Uh, let me try to comment. Um, I don't know that you really asked the question, but let me try to comment. In some districts where I've been and I've, I've had extensive experience, um, in my special ed background with working with gifted programming, in some schools and, and frankly, I, I would have to rely on my elementary staff and, and the staff sitting here to help fill in some blanks, but there are in some school districts, they approach, because gifted is like special ed for gifted students, as you said, you have to qualify. So, um, the programs that you're describing are set up to help meet those I E Ps and, and provide enrichment. It's part of a gifted I E P, says you're supposed to enrich the program for the student and accelerate, enrichment and acceleration. So that kind of program is an enrichment program. In some districts, what they do, uh, and I've been part of this, is they also offer it to students who may have just missed that cutoff and they have a, they call it like a gifted and accelerated program. So I don't know to what extent, ladies, you're going to have to help me out with that. I don't know if we do that or not, or.
And this is, this is.
I don't know if that's even what you're talking about.
I'm not talking about the elementary level, I'm talking about what's the kids get off.
Oh, okay.
The middle school and high school, there's a lot of new programs that, you know, and they, the students aren't aware and their parents aren't aware that these programs are going on. It's like the stock, uh, competition and stuff.
But I don't, I, I, and Mr. Hankel, you can correct me for, I don't think we limit that just to students with a gifted I E P to be in that.
I know, but if you heard what, what she said tonight, she said, the gifted kids, they have this program for the gifted kids and that's pretty much how it's, it's preached at the, at the physical level. It's, it's for the gifted kids, so.
So you're kind of talking about a marketing issue, the way it's marketed.
Yes, there's, there's students that aren't aware that they participate in this.
No, we can, we can certainly look into that. I mean, that's, I mean, I, without having, you know, the in-depth, um, background to, I can get back to you and find out, you know, what, what that's all about.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments? Yeah, sorry. Policy, one comment, Todd, you can talk to us after. Um, any other comments?